Hold on to something.
I'm aware of. A minute.
We'll come up with something.
You ordered one? You told me what to. No, you said you ordered on Sunday. So no, I mean the. Oh. I know it didn't. I wasn't in on Sunday. Okay. Not gonna care really. I just was curious. No, I hadn't gotten. It is on my notes.
Okay.
So I kind of depending whether I'm like.
Why does he need to make sure I know? Cause I don't want any to follow.
Right. No, I had it so.
Hey, six o'clock. We'll call a meeting order. We will dispense with the pledge of allegiance unless there's an objection. And I would need approval of the agenda. Make the motion.
Make the motion.
Thank you. About a second.
Second.
All's a failure.
I.
I posed. Fast. In business. Public works.
Um, just a couple of highlight updates since the council meeting. The um. Signed and notice of receipt has gone to TNT. So they have their go ahead. Lock in their subs. Um. There will be a reconstruction meeting held sometime within the next two to three weeks pending availability of the contractor and. All parties. And on May, on the May seventh council meeting. Um, council have interim findings, financing documents. To address. I'm working on those in the next week. Why is everything on schedule?
And the rescue plan funding. Unless somebody has a question on that, sorry.
Um, I'm gonna have Mike help me with this. Uh, he and I met with um Bob Pooch Jr. From Minnesota River Water. On our. Televising. Consideration for water and sewer. Projects with the American Rescue Act funding. And we kind of came to a decision of what we were gonna spend that money on that we think is a very useful. Need. And actually, MPC has been requesting.
Portion of money.
Yeah, it's been requesting us.
So the part, the portion that she's talking about, B, I would add, uh, let's see, I know actually only one of you have been out there. Um, out at the irrigation site. We have four main irrigators. We have four pivots. Each one of them obviously has a water line running into it. Generally speaking, we only push water to. One pivot at a time. So we change it every day. We don't oversaturate water. The way that it's set up out there with the wet well and the way that we pump out of there. We cannot accurately. Gauge the amount of water we're putting out. With a standard drawdown test. Which is essentially if you have a cylinder this round. Fill it up to this height. You pump it down to this height. How much time did it take to get down here? Tells me how many gallons that I'm putting out. We can't do that there because as we're pumping out, we're recycling the water back at the same time. So we keep prime out there. So what's happening is. We have. A fairly decent idea of how much water we put on to those fields there. We should know exactly how much water we put on. So what we need to do is we need to put a meter on each one of those pivots. That meter is going to cost. Roughly, I'm gonna say about seventy. We need four. We're at twenty eight grand right there for the meters. Then we'll have to, you know, install them and apply flanges on it. So of the. Sixty four thousand or sixty three, whatever it is, you know, that's half of it gone right here. Now, in talking to Bob, I think his. His sentiment was similar to mine with the. The televising and the cleaning. Falling under. The sentence was, it was kind of a vague sentence of, of maintenance. So whatever money we do have left over after putting those in out there and actually. There are a couple other small fixes that need to be done to those irrigators. So whatever money's left over after that, I will turn and then clean and camera with them.
It'll be in our.
Yep.
But those, those meters have been needed since.
Long before my time. They've basically been needed.
Yeah.
Just about since it was put in.
Put in like that. Because we have to report.
Yes, I.
What, what?
Every month that we're discharging, I have to report how much is going out, what the hydraulic loading is, nutrient levels, all that. So as of right now. We are using numbers that have been handed down essentially since the pumps were put in, basically from the manufacturer saying that, hey. It should pump this amount of water per minute. And that's what we go off of. I use a runtime meter. To see that, yep, okay, we pumped for eight hours and thirty two minutes. We should be pumping X many gallons per minute. This is what it should be. And that number doesn't always jive with how much water came down in the pond or, you know, so. The numbers, when they don't match, people ask questions. And when they ask questions, it's like, well.
Yeah.
Here we are. So they've been good to us about it. You know, but they've been recommending since I've been here and since long before I was here that.
Yeah.
Something changed.
It should be, it should be tracked by us. So with you guys, with our recommendation. We would like to start diving into cost estimates that we can provide accurate project costs for that.
Is that something that? That I remember hearing. We didn't, we didn't discuss that at the public works meeting.
We're just trying to find. The most suitable. Way to spend that money that's all the people.
Most suitable.
That have the best need at this point.
Yeah, the most beneficial. Instead of just spending that because we have to spend it, let's put it where we really need it. Worth while around it.
Yeah.
We'll move forward then with. We'll get in touch with vendors and get some prices on meters. How bad is it out there right now, Mike? By, by, by bad, I don't mean anything with ponds. I mean like the road out there, is it? Uh, the, the actual road in the field itself washed up. So that's to tell you, the, the kind of old well casing that they had under the road for Culver, orange well casing. Now that went bye bye and rode disappeared. So we're waiting until it's a little nicer and we'll fix it and. My guess with as wet as it is and how things have been going. I won't be putting water out there until June, which is really scary to me. Cause I can't put water on anything unless there's something to suck it up. I have forty acres that was put into alfalfa last year. The rest is. All just. Dry ground, I'll call it. I mean, there's nothing there because. Eighty of it will be corn this year and another forty will go to alfalfa. Right now, we're working into. We're coming back around. Get the whole one sixty into alfalfa, you know, away from the corn. For MPC, that's what we're supposed to do out there. We're working back into that, well. That gives me nowhere to spray water. And with the way things are going with the constant snow. And the rain and all that, it, it, my primary ponds right now, pond one and two. Are actually overflowing the gate and going into pond two. Which is my second. Now I did set that up properly. So I do still have some room in it. It's just, I know that that's how I need to go into fall. Usually I, I go as low as I can go and then. Fill throughout the winter. So I do have a little bit of room, but. In another month or so, it's gonna be getting dangerous levels. That's, that's right. And part of the reason I asked too, now that I think about it also, when I first got on the council, it was real handy to take it out there. Absolutely. Folks that hadn't seen it before. And I would encourage. Guys to take a look.
We were gonna go out there last fall, but it was like eight thirty, nine o'clock at me. Well, we got that with the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And it was a late meeting.
If any of you reach out to me, I'll take you out there one by one or figure out a way and all go out there, however you wanna do it. If it's, if it's dry out there, we can drive cars. If it's not dry, we're gonna take the pickup. Don't jump first.
Um, Max, that's just.
So.
Um, they can work on it.
That's it. And this. Our wall.
You're onto the redevelopment.
Yes.
So.
If you are.
Yeah, and that's fine.
I think that's where we're at.
Okay, so you may have to. Bring me back up to speed since the work session. So I'm just going after what I, what I was told and what I can read. It was my understanding that. Um. The board wanted details of where the budget was and what money had been spent and what money was allocated for what on this project. So I created a spreadsheet for him to see. Eligible versus non-eligible expenses for this project and so far what has been spent. That was. I believe emailed to you guys shortly after I returned vacation. I updated it for tonight just so that you can see. Um. We've got the property tax statements for two of the free, um, the three structures that are. Uh, collectible in twenty two, take for twenty one. That we will be required to make good on before we can put that taxes in. Um, and that's listed on the non-eligible expenses. And then I also have a reconstruction plan estimate from JD Construction, which was also. Um, a discussion point that I. Was told from the last meeting. Um. If, and correct me if I understood correctly incorrectly, but this estimate that was provided, I just had enough from JD Construction was not detailed enough for you guys. Is that true?
Correct. There was a couple people that helped me. Give a little caution.
Okay, so is there specific things other than what Jim could provide here that you have questions on that I can ask him? Because. I provided to him the reconstruction plans. Done by with stuff. And he is um doing it based off of the notes for the reconstruction listings out of these plans. And then providing, you know, some contingency above and beyond that. But this is as close as Jim could really get to an estimate before working without knowing what's. Really interior there before walls start coming down.
I guess, uh, for me, it was, you know, just kind of what. What is the bulk of the cost? I mean, I guess it can either be. Like very specific. Now.
So the bulk, I guess I don't understand what you mean by the bulk of the cost.
Like, I mean, it's sixty one thousand, but. Like.
How much of that is material?
Yeah, you know, like.
Labor.
I, I'm.
Perhaps.
Okay, well, it, it does. You want the sixty one two fifty four broken down based upon the notes that he has on here.
That we were asking. Does, does that matter?
Significantly? Would you be worried that materials are high or labor is high?
I guess not. It was just kind of a curiosity. You know, it, it wasn't. You know, dependent on the board and, uh, just curiosity is what I think we were.
Everybody good with the estimate?
Well, the reason I need to know if this estimate is, is feasible is because we brought JD's, JD Construction into this process early on. Okay? They haven't gotten paid for anything that they've done consulting or nothing with, with Seth, Carl, Doug, or anything. The amount of times they've been over there looking at that building with the structural engineers. So. None of this includes any of their time and I don't believe Jim's gonna charge us for any of that. So my intention was not to look for. Multiple bids on this project, but if the council is requesting I do that and go to someone else, then I need to know.
No. No.
But the next step is to get those stakeholders in a meeting so we can provide everybody a timeline. So that campus know when things are gonna start and Anderson's too, and it obviously water, weather and. Where restrictions are gonna play in there.
So that they're both through as little as. Necessary.
Yeah, and it's, and it's gonna be staged, Max. You know, Carl's gotta get in there and start and then we stop and then JD's gotta get in and start. Work on it. Just, it's, it's gonna be a piece, a piece, like this project. You guys are gonna. Leave on Friday and see three buildings and come back on Monday and see one. The road's gonna get blocked off. Alice is gonna be blocked off.
Yeah.
You know, the sidewalk's gonna be moved. At some point too, it'll all try to. You know, stay safe for the. For the public, but yet it's gotta be.
A peaceful.
Right.
I agree.
Right. And it's, you know, it's unfortunate because we're working into something that is, has a lot of age involved into it and. Um, both of those. Entities that are doing it, Doak Meyer and JD. They might come across something that they didn't expect. So it could slow the project down too. We just need to get done this summer.
Yeah. Project made it through the winter.
We don't know if it did. I haven't been in there. Last time it got really cold, a lot by the glass and there was a lot of snow inside that building. So I can't really say that it didn't. I did have one public um resident request to get in there and uh take some things out of one of the buildings and I told them you couldn't. Thought that there was something to salvage and I said regardless if there is. Go in there. It was just a big of a life.
All right. Uh. Bobby Joe, do you have any other questions?
So. Good to move forward. I, what I have been recommended to do by the auditors because we're using some of that. Using that two fifty. Um, to start working with, we have a fund that hasn't been used in some time and it's used for capital projects and based upon the. Um, all that revolving loan fund is created, it's for, it's for loans, whether it's interim or not. So we're borrowing money from ourselves. So in the next month or so, what I'll be doing is. Much like we did for the cart shed or the frontage and pine uh road projects, street projects, because I'll be working on the mechanisms to. Um, have the correct language from borrowing from that fund so that this project can continue with the right state auditor's eyes on it. When I get those resolutions together, I'll.
Nothing new on the city sales tax?
On the House, I think, has just about passed it and it's in the Senate. But as far as I know, the Senate's not having a. Many public hearings, so um. They reconvene today, I think, so.
Was it today?
I think they were off for the week for Easter. It's either today or tomorrow. So. Uh, as far as I know, there was no mandates to it. So I don't think that it's not gonna get approved.
Session ends.
Uh, the first part of the.
So then, uh. Just thinking. You know, get it on the ballot kind of thing.
Yeah, if it gets approved um by the state, then. Prior to the. Um, we don't hold a primary election in August, so we'll have the board pass a resolution. Um, to put it on the ballot. And then we'll work towards giving the public's information out on the reasons for. The ballot vote for November's general election. Once, if that approves at that point, then the city has to. Craft and adopt an ordinance supporting it. Um, and then that gets adopted. And typically we start.
Maybe fall.
It would actually be the spring of twenty three that we would start being able to take revenue from that. That's when it would actually be adopted. We wouldn't get revenue till each quarter is done. So probably summer of twenty three if it gets passed, we'll start seeing some of that.
Kurt's got all that stuff ready to.
Um, Kurt is actually working on the P E R D R right now. So I'll circle back with him when things get through the states. Yeah. There's no sense adding more time and effort into it. We don't want much of that.
Sure.
All right.
Any else? The grader.
I just put this back on the agenda so we could summarize the meeting.
Well, basically, we talked about the grader. Grader. Short, sweet, old piece junk. We're trying to keep on the road. Uh, we had public works meeting. Talked a little bit about it. Um, basically, you know, let us know that. There's no money anywhere fine for the grader. So that's where we sit. No grader. With that said, I need to. Try to keep this one. Going if, if it's throughout the rolling, I mean. Where we kinda have to go, it sounds like. So I guess I, I'm gonna at some point. Need to incur, you know, probably a seven thousand dollar. Minimum fix on it. We're gonna take it up to uh frontier tomorrow. See what they can do, see if they can come up with something, you know? If maybe it's something that we can. I guess pour a. Five hundred dollar fix to it every couple of months or something and then keep it running until we can figure out. Different steps to take.
And so should this not be able to be fixed? It is quite old.
It is. I mean, we're in a rock and a hard spot. That's it, really.
So if it can be fixed and we just don't grade, is that.
We really don't have a choice. We gotta keep going somehow.
So do we rent?
Well, so la- last year at the end of the year, I was able to get with um Ed from the county, who has now retired, but. Ed, Ed, uh, he didn't come in, but I had one of the operators come in. And we were charged, oh, four hundred dollars. For the one time that they came in, they hit every gravel road that we had in town. And we straightened them up and everything, but that was four hundred dollars. What you have to look at is this time of year. When the frost is coming out and it's nasty and we're hitting roads daily for a couple of weeks' time. We're obviously not gonna pay the county to come and do that, so that we just can't. We just flat out can't. So we'll do what we can do and. You know, Ray is, Ray is my operator. So, you know, he's gonna do the best that he can do and that's just gonna be what it's gonna be. Really all there is to it, in all honesty. We'll make it work with what we have. The road might. Kind of like a roller coaster. It'd be a roll.
There aren't any grants out there for it? There's no grants for equipment? Okay.
Not really. The, the one grant that there is, we're gonna be using. For the development.
Because there's three pieces of equipment. A portion of it will be. Will be our cost. There's no large items. This, it is up, those, and the reason for that is because it depreciates quickly. You can't put free money into something that's on these values.
Yeah. My fifty thousand dollar grader. Well, and you know, where we sit. Seventy thousand dollar grader. Where we sit now, like you said, with ours, you know. Rough estimate on value is, you know, ten, twelve. Fourteen at the most, I would guess. Now, the one that we were looking at, my understanding is that it's basically sold already. As soon as I said, no, it's gone. Just again, for your knowledge on stuff like this, those things, brand new, brand new. Are around five hundred thousand. So. That eighty thousand mark was, was pretty nice. So that's where we sit right now. It's gonna go up to frontier, but. Honestly, I mean, what I'm getting from everything is that. I'm gonna have to shell out seven thousand. The city, you know, my department is gonna have to shell out seven thousand. And cross our fingers and hope and pray that it fixes. Where we sit. Unless any of you wanna come up with something?
Isn't the pond happening?
As we, uh. With the water sewer systems ordinance. Divisions, you wanted to.
Uh, I just put the notes in there for you guys to see what we got. All, it'll be an impact factor too. We're already. Um, already started working on that ordinance.
Okay.
Right now. For the things to. What session? I just started.
Yeah, I was going. Or on that.
Yeah.
But I have any question on?
What I had just seen today, I mean, our ordinance is from nineteen eighty one. It's still very similar to what Minnesota basic code for water and sewer is at this point. There's not much. Changes to the water section of the ordinance. Um, the sewer regulations and. So there might be a few things that will change from those of basic code. But from what I've already seen. From that age of one, the only thing that's really. Needed is that it needs to get codified with our, our rates. Ordinance and how we charge out. How we do forget water forgiveness. We've got a policy in the governor.
On to Barbara.
Or do you wanna? Sure, I'm just kinda short of. So, um, as we all know, that there are some funds out there and there's discussions about how to spend those funds, what they can be. Spent on and how to go about it. Um. It looked like Christine that at the end of. We put in this. Tax statement.
Uh, yeah.
For that building, I, I.
It is.
Like it was the address. So Mike, Bobby Joe, no, Bobby Joe wasn't there. Um. I mean, who attended that?
Mike, you. Max, Miriam. And myself.
Uh, took a tour of the bank. Um, thinking that that would be a great location for. Uh, took a tour of the bank, um, thinking that that would be a great location for the library. It's it needs all the needs of the library. Um, it was kind of. contingent on whether it would go through as. How much it was. Gonna be asked for. Now, it looks like on these taxes that it's way out of the price range that we were thinking.
Mike's just, this is just what's on.
Oh, right.
Actually.
Mike, you, did you talk to him?
Yes, Max.
Okay, so I got your email about that.
Yeah.
Conversation, but I guess I don't know anything after that.
Essentially, I think what Grant kind of laid out for us was a number of around a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand. For the building itself.
That is in our ballpark? Is that, yes? How is that in your ballpark?
That's what was, that's the number that was given to us was, and I think my understanding of what everyone is thinking here is that. There's the sixty, whatever it is, thousand coming back to the city from Kitchi. And then whatever the sale possibly of the current library would be. Is the number that would get. The close to the one twenty. And then my understanding is the library board said that they would be fundraising as well.
Yeah, we have.
They have some, they have some money currently or a donor or something, I believe was, there was something said to that extent of a donor that I had heard. I believe, am I right on that, Matt? I think that's how the.
That is correct.
The thought was from everyone.
Yes. So that's as much as I know. Is that's been done, been a consideration to move the library. Nobody really knows what, you know, what the old libraries were. Although, when I look at this tax statement. Cause that's all I had to go on. I was like, oh.
Well, and it was, it was said, it said by Grant, just so that everyone knows. I mean, it's no secret. Grant said that they purchased that building, I believe it was one eighty five, wasn't it, Max? One eighty or one eighty five is what they purchased it for. And they know that they'd be selling at a loss, selling to us. It sounded like if they were to sell to anyone else, it would be much, much higher.
And that's a number that he had suggested. That he would be comfortable presenting to his board.
Correct.
Not saying, I'm not saying you can buy it for this. This is something that could be presented. He would be comfortable presenting.
So we made it off.
Correct. He he essentially said that his board would take that number quite serious.
The reason I put these tax statements in the packet for the board to review was. For the board to be aware of the amount of property taxes and net tax capacity that would be removed from your levy. Currently, that main building takes in fifty, five thousand four hundred and eighty one dollars and four hundred and fourteen for the parking lot each year in property taxes. And your total. Estimated market value between the two is supposed to be hundred grand. It's gonna get removed by net tax capacity and taxes. So we're. The tax. Yes, so in that.
It's something you can say.
We would also, what would we gain by selling it, right?
Well, it depends on what the county's.
And don't forget, commercial property, we've all seen how long this has been sitting up. The old library would have the same potential to stay as long, if not longer.
That part doesn't have a. It doesn't have the space. It doesn't have the, the value.
And everyone's gonna have to come to that that agreement and that that is something that the council and has to really think about, and that is that. Yeah, I know, it's a great building, but you are losing a substantial amount for the rest of the city.
Yep.
And. When that comes back on the tax base, the old library, if it comes to be selling. How long will it be there? What's going to even work? How long, you know, that's old building that needs repair? That's why you haven't want to get rid of it.
No, I I don't think it's in bad repairing. Doesn't fit the purpose. Library.
Do you have a tax?
I don't.
That would show you what you're.
I did, I did look at it. I don't think it's.
Yeah, the estimated market values are.
Do you have any estimate market value of this one?
Are really skewed.
So you're looking at estimate. Value of this, and why would you? The reason I don't have it is because when a property is discounted from taxes, it's not, it's almost nothing. So right now, that property, when I did pull it up on here. Says thirty eight hundred for the old law enforcement building and twenty six something for the library in terms of value.
It's because.
It's all, it's all information.
No.
Non-tax. But when's the last time it has been evaluated?
It's every year that they do it, but the difference, the difference is the private versus the public ownership. That's what, I mean, I understand what Christine's saying. Being as the city owns the old or the current library, the value of it is next to nil.
Right.
Whereas if it was under the ownership, oh, ownership of someone private right now, it would be more that apples to apples, like. Missy's saying, I I totally see that, but right now you can't compare it to.
Not unless I get something. And that.
You have to have someone.
I need somebody up, need to provide that information.
You have to actually have someone come out and evaluate the property and give you a true estimate of its current worth. Would be about the only way to.
The only other way I could do it, Mike, is to go off the last time our league. The leadless of cities assessed all of our properties in terms of.
Insurance.
Probably be the next closest I can provide to.
Sure.
Board for review. It was building and contents and make it fire here, every year. Yeah.
And right now. Deerwood owning it, very solid. That's fair, right there. So I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna discourage anyone. But at the same time, I don't wanna shoot myself in the foot here, but, you know, hampering us. Uh, on the next budget now. And there's, there's a couple of other points, I mean, to be made on that building over there. Yes, Deerwood does currently own it, but I do think that they're going to actively try to sell it pretty soon, in the sound of it. I don't know that you're gonna get. Much to come into that building, other than another bank. I really don't know that you're gonna get another bank to come into Black, but right now, not unless Black Duck grows exponentially, and that's not on anybody's radar anytime soon. My fear on that building is that it becomes like these over here, and we end up holding the bag on another four hundred thousand dollar demolition. Like we're going into over here. There's a lot to really be considered from every angle. Mm-hmm. On this.
Whose decision is? Is it the Gulf? I mean, is it the library? According to the policy provided by Kitchigami, the, the, the ci- the city that or the government entity. That has the library and has to agree to it and the, the local library board has to agree to what they want to use the money for. And then that needs to be sent to Kitchigami and they have to approve that request. Who is the call? Board? City board?
We might want to use the library board.
I burned out.
Yeah.
Library board.
And the city council have to agree to what to use that funding for.
To get the funding. Otherwise, if you're talking, this is going to sit there forever, if we can't agree.
We don't really have a plan. What's your plan B?
The plan B is to, um. Add on to the existing library, a conference area and like a private study rooms.
But that's.
And then.
That, that's the library board's plans. The, the city's original plan was to use some of that money to fix the building in the current state that it's in. This is a lot of the argument.
Right. Well, she had a library.
She did put that document in here from twenty twenty one, I believe, was the minutes.
Gavin, if building's not up to code?
It's up to code.
It's up to code.
Oh, is the bathroom up to code?
Yes.
Also. If it's forced up.
It's still up to code.
It's not just that we need to, it's that why should we use that money to, so this is how libraries are. I'm in the middle. I am not speaking for either side. This is how the library board sees it, is that you guys should have fixed the front steps. That is the city's responsibility. That is not, this money is. This money is like a gift. Not.
No, it's not.
Who's money is?
It's the city.
It's not just the city, though. Some of it came from the county. Nobody knows where this money came from. That's the problem.
The kitchen does have it and they have set up what, how they feel it's.
Weren't they representing it as city overage that was paid?
No.
It's from the county as well, and that is why they are trying to.
It's from bad bookkeeping.
Yes.
So it was money that didn't get spent, that was allocated for some payroll, um, other things that. They don't know exactly now where all of it came from. They know that there is an overage. They did some. Financing studies on their own and came up with these amounts for each library grant. What, what formula they use, I do not know.
So somebody somewhere has to be willing to bend one way or another. Everybody has to be willing to bend and come to the table if we're gonna do anything, otherwise. I mean, everybody can be stubborn and we can just let the money sit there. The city could be stubborn, the library boards could be stubborn, and that's not what any of us want to do.
That's exactly what we, I, I don't want, but.
Well, I can't, I can't speak on.
I understand.
I can just say what was communicated.
Oh, unless.
I, I can't speak on either side. I can just say what I want.
And, you know, at. On that point, you know, sixty thousand dollars isn't gonna go very far. Over there.
I could sure, the Gulf could sure use sixty thousand dollars. There's a lot of places in this city that sixty three thousand dollars.
Sixty three thousand dollars.
I'm just like, I'm just listening and, uh.
Well, when you consider what the prices are to build right now or to think about adding on.
Yeah.
When we, when we talk.
It's critical also.
Right.
What, what did, I mean, we've been talking about this stage. Out at the Wayside Rest. What's the current price tag on that stage up to seventy thousand dollars?
Right.
It's twenty five by thirty or something like that? And it's not even fully enclosed. It's not insulated. It doesn't have full electric. It doesn't have windows. It doesn't have squat. Seventy grand.
For seventy.
So, so that should tell you the kind of addition that you're gonna get brought onto this building. If it goes that route, you're gonna get a lean to. For sixty four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm with you. I, I agree, Missy. Sixty feet. It is a lot of money.
But you're also have to look at, like, you know, when you go down and you go shopping and you're like, oh, a lot of this stuff goes on sale and I was like, I spent four thousand dollars on stuff that I didn't need that was on sale. Like.
That's how the board is looking at it. What's the, why can't we just let it sit there? It's not going anywhere.
You don't wanna spend much money just because you save the money.
As long as you can get something from Kitchigami that says it's not cold.
Going the other way. I don't think it's going to based on the experience I've gotten with the firm direct in the only two places that we've been asked for it. And third, got declined right away. It was printed and I got declined.
Well.
Somehow it showed up. So something happened a long time ago.
Right. Well, we need to look forward. We can't keep dwelling on the past. We can't dwell on what didn't happen to the existing library building. What we need to do right now is move forward. And we need to find out what's the best use of the funds for the library or Black. Is it move the library into a brand new building or, excuse me, newer building? Or improve on what we have and make what we have right?
And moving probably over.
Kelly, do you know if there's any, uh, future improvements to the amount of hours of operation that this library is gonna be able to have? One of my concerns is having a very large facility for our, our current libraries. Don't get me wrong. I think it's a great idea. Okay? I'm gonna say that personally, and I think it's a great idea. My biggest concern is. Our current hours of operation to the public are less than what, twenty five hours a week?
I think it's twenty one.
Hours of operation versus maintenance and operation.
That building that size does not seem feasible financially. Has anybody looked at that was, that went over there, looked at heating and cooling for that building yet? Insurance for that building yet? We need to seriously look at that before a decision is made. Well, the thing is, we're not fully like dead set on that building. We'd be happy with any building. Okay. I mean, I'm not like, we're not like, well, that's a place, let's do it, like.
That's good.
It needs to be discussed.
Good.
There's really no other building in town, though. I mean, let's be real here. Uh, what are we talking about? There's nowhere else to go.
Well, okay, I wanna backtrack just a second here from a year ago when we had everybody in this room, you know, pieces of the library board and the public and the council. And we came up with this laundry list of short term and long term goals. And back then. Uh, Tim Freeman's building was still up in the air. We knew that this public works building was possibly going to come off the floor. Which gives the existing library the opportunity to grow. That was the conversation a year ago, was it not? That's still possible. That public works building is now moving forward, which means that old lumberyard. I know there's a lot of people have a lot of sentimental, you know, ties to it. That gives us space to improve on what we have. So we're not restricted to what we have in terms of size, you know, when we can get bigger. That's still a possibility.
I would, I would, I mean.
Well, that's what the board wants. It's like, why can't we just sit on this money? Lumber prices go down.
I think we should.
And then see what happens, like.
I think what we need to do is, is we can't just do this. We have to do this all the way. We have to do this.
Right.
Did you explain to them about the sales, the sales tax?
We had spoke about it briefly. There wasn't, I go to email that I sent out, um. So, and there isn't a lot of information about the sales tax I have. Um, but still, we're still waiting to hear if that's going through. But yeah, I did send, sent it to your.
We, I have, we have some future possibilities.
Yeah.
You don't need to expect the, the, the library board to start fundraising to make up the difference between sixty three grand and a hundred and twenty just to buy a building. I'd rather see us make up the difference to really get a building that's gonna fit.
Well, if you found a sixty thousand dollar donor.
And I think we were asked to just explore all these different options and that's the one that came on, and so we followed the path. And if there's other paths, we'll follow those.
And that was a great, you know, that's a great path. I mean, it's just sitting around.
If I can play devil's advocate for a few minutes here. The current library over there, it, it needs to be bigger according to the library. They, they need more storage space. They need conference rooms. They need meeting rooms. From what I'm hearing, and they, they would really like a kitchenette style thing over there. From what I'm hearing. There is at least a hundred thousand dollar addition that's upon that. At least. Hundred thousand dollar addition. To a. Forty or fifty thousand dollar building print. I guess, right? And we flip side it with this, you know, why can't we just wait? Why can't we just hold the money for years? Great. That is, I, I, I don't mean to, you know, say anything, Kelly, but I hate that statement absolutely. Great, that is, I I I don't mean to, you know, say anything Kelly, but I hate that statement, absolutely hate that statement. It's a backwards way of saying, let's just put stuff off until it rots into the ground. I've seen it happen many times. The other portion with that is, I would implore any of you to go talk to Daryl, go talk to the lumberyards. Go talk to any material place and they're going to tell you, these prices are not coming down. They're here to stay. They might come down a couple percentage points, but they're not coming down to where they used. So if you sit on this money for ten years, what was gonna cost you fifty thousand this year, let's say. Well, we talked about this and we saw it with the public works building. How much did that go up in a year's time? Right, so if we sit and we wait, like we always do with everything. What are we gonna do, we might as well just write it off and walk away. I really, really suggest that we roll the ball somehow, keep it moving and don't back burner this.
Well, I think that's something that the entire library board needs to sit down and talk about because.
Well, and truthfully, I mean, there's gotta be some, some flex and some give from the library board, but the the stanchion, they're just. The stance is too staunch when it comes to digging the heels in and we're not gonna give it all. That's, that's the attitude I hear from the library board, and that's just not gonna work.
What exactly are they, are they stopping on or what, what are they?
They, basically, like I said, they don't, like, the front door of the library, I worked there fifteen years ago as a sub. At this library and the door is still screwed up. The door should have been replaced. So they wanna spend the mo- this money on that and to fix the front, which like, you know, that's totally fine. The kitchen would totally go for it, the board thinks that is the city's responsibility.
It's the city owns the building.
They don't wanna spend that money from kitchen.
So they're being stubborn, they say that it's a city. Says some of this stuff?
Yes, and I will be totally honest, there are hard feelings between some of the library board and city. I have no idea why anymore, cuz it's completely different city councils, like, it's been turned over several times, but. It's just weird, I I can't speak for them, not, I'm not a member of the library board. Well, the one that was at all the meetings is out of town, so, and I didn't feel like, I didn't feel like another library board member. They just come in here and learn everything right now. Everything's happening kinda quickly.
All right, with that, then I would say, Lori, the next library board meeting. You guys are gonna probably sit down and.
And we can, I don't have a vote in.
And I I realize that, but you'd be able to bring us back some sort of.
If these get discussed more, like, like I said, I mean, I I don't think it should be put on the back burner either.
No, I don't either, I I just, I wanna let you know that since this came about, there's been one library board meeting. There was, there was one in like November, none in December, none in January, none in February, we had one in March. We had a special meeting, Mike um was, and Bobby Joe were at that one, um, how many? People showed up at uh the March meeting, we had to have a call and to have a forum, so it's not just. It's hard to get them all together, even though the meetings are set. That is another issue that that I can see.
They used to be really good, I don't know what happened after COVID, it's like they just don't. Show up as much, but.
I have a a straight to the point question of the council. Is this something that the council would truly consider or is truly considered while we're here at a work session talking about? And instead of just rolling it to the next work session.
I would seriously consider it.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
I too. Is there another building, is there one that, you know, that's possible as well?
And you know, as far as getting more hours, that's something we could definitely, that was happening before COVID. Stephanie was ready to come to council and talk about it and COVID hit. Um, the new director has mentioned to me that that's a possibility again. But I don't see the point in adding more hours when, I mean, we've outgrown the building, I have people calling every freaking week. Asking for a private meeting room, literally the only room I have for them to meet in is my office. I mean, there is, it's not private at all in there. Um, there is no room, we have a big collection, we could have a bigger collection, I have to read books constantly.
If if you were to move into the new building, would it be solely library? Or are you guys looking at the possibility of adding in what we've all talked about to be a community center?
I'd be fine with sharing it with anyone, I mean, if I don't know what the deal is with resource center, but anything like that. We talked about doing a food shelf if we bought a bigger building, like, having, creating food shelves. I don't, I mean, it's a possibility, I'm not like gonna say that building's just for us, I'm not that. What would we need all of that for?
And then I just, I ask for.
Yes. I didn't wanna bring someone in that doesn't know anything that we're talking about.
But this was the conversation.
So, moving forward then, what would the next step really be, Christina, what do you think, do, do we get? Evaluation on the current building? You also.
The remodel and the additions to the existing ones, so we can really look at.
And I can do that.
Fair to fair, you know?
I can do that.
All angles are. Looked at, because, yeah, all right. I have no problem on saying little weight.
And I mean, the the city can afford this? But I mean, we can figure out how to do it, I mean, we're willing to do that. That's, I mean, that's what I'm asking, I I hate doing things, that's where I'm.
I agree with Mike, the the board's gotta.
We gotta have some sort of clarification.
If that's the path we're gonna go, there's gonna be different costs that are in there.
It's gonna go up.
And is the board fine with that, you know, your taxpayers and your constituents are okay with putting money into the library?
Well, even if you add to the existing library, the same commitment would happen.
Absolutely, I mean, on both sides. So.
Plus the library would have to be open a lot.
That's, that's my thing, is that I'm not even really.
The hours, no, I would say.
So time the library is open, so I don't like, I knew like. Taxpayers point of view, I pay taxes on something that I'm not even able to.
You know how often I hear that, I hear that all the time, I'm open till six on Tuesdays, I'm open on Saturday. What about Thursday and Friday?
It's during dinner. After school and then we have dinner.
As much as the library has tried to accommodate.
It doesn't matter what I, what I'm trying to say is whatever I do, I'm not gonna make anybody happy.
I was, I'm just.
What would it look like if you could have, what kind of schedule would you have if you had the opportunity to open, what would? Regardless of what it is saying right now, what, what does that look like?
Yeah, I'd be fine with it on Mondays, I'd love to have a normal schedule. But that's just not the hours, I mean, what are we talking like forty hours a week?
I don't know, I'm I'm like going for it, like, if if we were to present this to Kitchen, what are we gonna ask them for and how are we gonna justify? So if Mondays is, if Mondays are a popular day, because we don't have school days on Monday. Um, and Saturday is a, is a day that we should work, we should be open six hours or eight hours versus four. Or what does that would really look like?
Saturday should be open past noon, but just the way hours are.
So you're only allotted so many hours.
I'm only allowed.
Week from.
Now, why, why is?
Why is that?
That's what they're budgeted for, it was more before I got here, that was the first, the library come down the hill so bad. That they had cut three, at least three hours when I started, that was my, my first.
Or, and I will, part of the problem for all libraries is that it's the way they're funded.
Yes.
And that is at the state level. And they are still using the number of checkouts. As how they rate a library, how many books are physically checked out, books, videos, whatever. Not what the library is actually getting used for.
Right.
It's a whole different equation, they have not changed that.
Libraries are not just books anymore.
You go to Bell Trammy or one of the midgy, that library, when they have their, go there any time of the day. And there's people coming and going and sitting in there, I mean, it's just, it's nonstop.
Do you by any chance know what the hours for the Pioneer River Library are? I mean, they're, they're, we're roughly the same size, you know, we're pretty close, population wise to Pioneer River. They're also not that terribly far from Brainerd, it's like we are not that far from the midgy. You know, each of those towns have bigger libraries, I'm just curious to see, you know, are they up around forty hours a week and we're just low or?
Are they on the same guidelines as we are?
No, they're kitschy.
That's actually where our headquarters is.
Okay.
They have quite a few more hours.
So then we need to understand why we're so much.
They do it by checkout.
Your checkout sucks, your hours suck.
Yeah.
Is that include your ease, your ebooks?
The ebooks don't count, it doesn't matter where you're at. But and that's cut down on our checkouts a lot, the thing is, we have people come in and read the newspaper or they come in and use a computer or they use wifi. Yeah, it's not just books and movies, it's everything and we have programming.
Who are asking weekly to use a room so they can do child visits, people that have to have. Guardian and guardian at White.
So if we, if we, if we had a bigger building, Kelly, and you had, you had your, your rooms, your meeting rooms and everything else. Do you think you could sell it to Kitchen to give you forty hours?
I think we could, just because of the location, most people don't even know that we have a library in Blackwood.
I would fully agree with that.
And I literally, when people use maps, they have to what, like, they usually end up at the school and I walk outside, wave my arms. And they're like, oh, that's where the library is, because maps doesn't take them, library, when it does take them, all we have is that little sign. And that's something the library board could discuss about signage. So I mean, that's something.
Kelly, she's gonna fix your site.
If that's, if that's.
She'll fix it.
We have, I don't know why the hours are long.
No.
All the location, but the hours, I think, is is it Google, there's one website, it might be Bing, but the hours are wrong for our library. And we've sent them, the community center, the resource center has sent tools to try and fix them, it's right, it is now.
So Kelly, do you pick the, the days of the week and the amount of hours or business per day? Or is that a schedule?
See, it was set, and I have changed it because just since COVID, during the summer especially, when we have. Tourists, I would come in at one o'clock and there would be a line of people, people waiting to get in the library and that's totally dead in the last hour from five to six. So we changed it, so we were open noon to five, and I mediated that. On Thursday and Friday, we're still open on six on Tuesday for late people that work in the midgy or can't get there by five. Otherwise, the hours are what they were when we came. I I had to get rid of hours, I had to take three hours off and I took, there was an extra hour on Thursday when I started, they were open from one to seven. And then it was nine to one on Wednesday and Saturday, which I really hated doing that. We've talked about from going from ten to one.
And Saturday?
Yes. But I mean, I've, there's been times where I've had people there and I just stayed cuz I don't wanna kick them out until one. And nobody else comes in, which might just be cuz that's what our hours are, but at the same time.
Right.
I'm not gonna stay open another hour.
Just wondering if my, if switching one of those days to a Monday would increase your checkouts.
See, Nan's tried that, okay, it didn't work.
It didn't work.
The thing is, like, Wednesdays, I think she switched Wednesdays with Monday, Wednesday, isn't that where they get senior discount and everything at the store?
Yes.
Yes, so that is why, that's when our older population comes in is Wednesday morning, and they're early, they're in early and gone by.
Do you not want your hour?
No.
An hour.
And everybody says, oh, well, my kids would go there, and this is just what Nan said, that our kids would go in there on Monday. We have nothing to do on Monday, but nobody ever came, it really kicked off if you look him on Wednesdays, so he just went back.
We have to look at it as it is right now.
Yes.
And I understand, you've been in your role now for. Years, three, four?
Since twenty seventeen.
Been a while. And fire you with someone else or Nancy or.
Yeah.
So, we're talking the scheme of, you know, half a dozen. Eight years since now, Nancy?
Well, we can try it.
And our demographics.
I mean, I'm totally fine with trying it, but this is, I mean, I have to come to you and ask and I have to ask Kitchen, I mean, if you guys want me to move Mondays, I'm fine with that, pick a day.
I I would, I would, my recommendation would just be to, to table it because I. I don't know if this is true enough, but I've heard from people that, that school might be going back by maybe.
I heard that in extreme hearsay.
That's true or not, so that might, that might play into.
I don't, I don't know. You know, I think that's been one of those things they've said ever since they went to the port.
Well, I think we have to renew it at this moment.
Well, I think the whole class, it's like the whole theory of being open for the students on Mondays, like, all fine and fun, people who live in town. But, you know, there's a lot of kids that can't get into town on Monday, but I mean, I think in theory, like, it's like, oh, we should open on Monday for all these kids, but since like, in reality.
How many are actually in town that can walk over here cuz their parents are at work?
And are they really, they're probably just gonna be a penalty ask because they're just gonna come in there and use all your free stuff and run around.
I'm, I love having kids around.
But you know what I'm saying, they're not, they're not helping your checkout, whatever.
Yeah, they're not checking out books.
No, they're just in there because.
All right, well, I think.
What, what that's telling me is, is that the city needs to put more money into the library to fund the Mondays when the hours can't be funded.
And you've got a city council, I believe, that is willing to back the library.
But at this point, are we?
I, what I. What I'm hesitant on is, is that we make sure that we do it physically responsibly.
So what's our next step?
I think, I thought we talked about continuing down the path, so you were gonna, gonna ask them, you're gonna do your thing.
I think this is where I, I mean, maybe I'm pushy, I don't know, but I mean, this is where I'm looking for something more firm and concrete. At this point, if we go any much further with anything, we have to go all the way. But we're either buying the building over here or we're putting an addition on over there. I I think that needs to be understood. Otherwise, what are we doing, kicking the canter on town?
You're not gonna get me to make a decision tonight.
No, but I mean.
I don't, but what you're saying is that, you know, we need to follow.
The consensus.
Lori, are you there, I believe there's supposed to be library board tomorrow night.
Yes, there is, yeah.
Um, should we just have a? Um, should we just have a, sit down with them? Whoever shows up and tell them they need to come to the next work session, so that I'm not here?
I think that's, I think, yeah, fair to put those people, right, and.
I think they need to be primed to come to the table, ready to talk.
And do you want all of them, or do you want, okay, that's, that's why, that is why we did.
We, you need your.
Yeah.
Speaks for you.
Miriam.
Miriam, and then.
Mary Solomon.
Mary, Mary.
Yes. So. Yeah, she is, but she's the one who does show up and she is there. I just found it very. Found it disappointing that we had to call somebody on the phone to get a forum after not having meetings, and that was, if. You publicized it well, reminding people.
And that's not my job.
No.
I, I'm supposed to show up to those meetings and say my report and be done just.
Always president.
Yeah, and she does a good job, she reminds everybody and she usually always shows up. It's.
It's whoever else is on the board, and I don't think that kind of.
So moving forward then, I'm going to talk to the library and, and find out exactly what they're wanting. In addition, I'm going to essentially figure price and everything, and Christina's gonna do the valuation of the current building. You got sixty-four thousand dollars. And it's sitting there. Basically is one.
But I think I agree with, um, Michael Stares, you know, he's tabling, if we don't just keep moving that, pushing it forward. It's just gonna be set over here till it's forgotten about for a while, until there's more bad feelings.
We don't, and maybe we need to just discuss about. I don't know, just changing the space in there or something. The thing is. They spend all this money on legacy events and stuff, and I can only have half of them because we need to use half library to set up their equipment. There's nowhere for anybody to sit. We can't do it outside in the winter, obviously. You know, that's, that's what's really bothering me, is, you know, we get all this money to do this stuff and Blackwood's missing out on all of it.
Can I just ask why we haven't utilized other locations? Is there a reason why we haven't like used the space or the?
Of course, this has always been banged into my head, and we have used the senior center, which is next door. If you're not bringing people into the library, they're never gonna come back to the library. And ninety-nine percent of the time, if I get somebody in there for movie night, or if I get somebody in there just to print tax papers or something. They'll eventually remember the library, and they'll come back, and that's, and nine times out of ten, I always give them, like, we had that goat day. I gave out two cards that day and they had never been there before. It's just getting them there. I mean, if you can have enough, and legacy events has, I mean, they have music, they have everything, so you'll eventually get. Everyone's interest, you know what I mean? Like, it's not just books, it's everything. Yeah, and we're missing out, I mean. Kitschy's spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on that a year that they're getting from the Legacy Grant. And we're missing on half of it, missing out on half of it, because I don't have room for it, or I do it at the community center, or the senior center. I mean, the library is not, they're just putting the name on it basically, that's senior center. Not really doing us any justice.
I'm sure you guys were just talking with this, but only you were checking, guys were talking at first, you said that maybe you had, like, a donor?
Yes.
How much?
We don't know exactly, we have a rough estimate, but it's in some kind of stocks and they're getting it out.
So I mean, I'm just looking at like, how far away are you, like, you know, sixty thousand dollars is not very close to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but that's like, like, how many?
The treasurer takes care of all that, and it's not gonna be all gate sales, but it's.
It's forgiving us.
Yeah.
No, and the squeaky wheel gets paid, so it's interesting to hear this stuff, because I don't, I'm not a library goer, so like, to hear you talking, it's like. Well, I could get on board with this, like, it's exciting to hear that kind of stuff, because I don't go there anymore.
Yeah.
We still have an already book.
Oh, like, you know, all you have to do is call me. Tell people that all the time, just call me.
So, yes, I. We're all for it. Something. What, exactly?
Well, I think this is something.
That remains to be seen.
It's too bad that that space that you, that is there can't be utilized better, instead of trying to figure out. You know, and take something off of the pay packs. Off the city, you know, I mean.
There's just not enough space for your mom's stuff.
And that hurt, yeah.
You know, and you have to keep in mind, I got rid of over half the collection when I started there, and I hadn't bought near that. And I get rid of every stuff over here, so.
And every time you want to host an event, you know, you need space. And sometimes that event is going to interfere with people coming in.
That.
For their peace and quiet, for their reading, because you've got kids and they're watching a movie, or you've got something else going on.
Yep.
So it, the building doesn't work as it is. And you can't grow unless you add to the.
It worked fine when the library was about books. You know, it was fine, you came in and got your book, but with everything that libraries are nowadays, I mean, we do taxes, we do events, it's not just. Yeah.
Right, that's all I know, it's filling in that, that other void that we don't have, and that's it.
If you got like more than you need though, if you found the well as part of the rules. Is it like your job? I'm totally, don't know what I'm talking about, is it your job to like, could you go in, like. If you could get the resource center, would they, would they like lease a little?
See, why can't we do that? Can't we like rent an office?
That's what I mean, yeah, that, maybe find somebody else that wants to help pay for, like, a little space in there that actually.
We'll see, the city owns the building, so that would be up to them to rent it, but I'd be totally, I know that, but you know what I mean? I believe that would be the main responsibility, because aside if that was.
I don't think he owns the building anymore. The building got sold.
It just, something looked.
Yeah, not just them, anyway.
Anything, yeah, like you said, I have the food shop idea, like, anything like that, I think that's all a really great idea, the thing you just need to like, just start, just dig in.
Somebody's got the, somebody just needs one office funding for it.
Yeah, I'll pay for that.
Everybody good? We like libraries?
Yes.
It would really be nice.
We were.
Leave the past.
And, and we didn't, yeah. Nobody sits on this council, whoever was there.
I don't, and. I've done my best to not let that revolve.
I know, I know, you and I have talked.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, yes, yes. Oh, thank you, Kelly.
See you tomorrow.
Our DMV.
Uh, so interesting story, since prior to going on vacation. I have some information to share with you more. So, one of the reasons this has been kicked down the road, um, for so long is because shortly after. The city put in a formal response, formal request to the DPS or DMV, uh, Red Lake. Um, so it's been kind of tied up in a little bit of a political issue for the last six months. And, uh, the people at the state haven't been focused on it until recently. Um, when I did find out about this, I got some legislators involved and. Some, as you've seen, some of the support letters from Deerwood and like, uh, corner garage in order to try to push this across the finish line. I spoke with my rep, lot of Park Rapids, um, earlier last week. And it's my understanding that from a core level of DPS, our proposal has gone back to the state for another look at. And they're actually meeting on it Wednesday this week, so I'm hoping to get a wild answer for it. I've had a couple of apologies, um, that no one's. Focused on this at an urgency level, it's also my understanding that any requests to the state for this type of thing. Supposed to only take a ten day turn. And it's been a year and a month. So, um, I, and I mean, I, I'm at this point right now where it's like, you know, tell me no, if that's the case, tell me no, but tell me something. So that we're not sitting here spinning our wheels, um. I understand why it's kind of tied up with that other request, but it's disheartening considering those that are involved.
So it's not part of their normal process, like, you stage approval, like, so you said it's going back?
So you have, you have your regional, uh, representatives and ours is Cassie Booker and Chuck Rappards, and she's got two. Partners of the state that she works with, they're just regional, um. Representatives from DPS, it goes to Brandon Walsh, who's at the head of this portion of the commission. That can give final approval. It's my understanding that it got to that level but never got addressed. And the regional people resubmitted it and now.
Okay, that's where.
And now the state is looking at it, yeah. So. You know. If it's, if it's outside the jurisdiction of, of the sovereign nation. In my understanding, it's statutorily can be, you know, supported, but once you get inside. The sovereign nation, they don't really have, state patrol really has no jurisdiction in there. So I think there's an issue as to what that limited DMV at Red Lake's request was versus ours. And how the state can really handle it in terms of statute. But if you look at part of the request of the state, part of the statute request is you have to be with them, you can't be any more than. X amount of miles from office to office in order for it to be approved. And you also can't take away a percentage, X percentage away from that other office, and also to get approved, so. What we would take away from this pod and what we would take away from Beltrami, not go past the people of the threshold that's set by the statute. Including the distance that we're away from each other. That was, that was the proposal I sent to the state. We were within those parameters based on, I guess, the profiles and Google Maps lie from office to office. The problem is, is that Red Lake is within that. Mileage from us, closer, I don't know how. And I don't know if it has, I mean, it's not an existing office, they just can't have two that close together. But I, I don't understand how a DMV on a sovereign nation that doesn't buy, have, have to comply with. State statutes and regulations, state full supports, and actually have a DMV that follows my mark.
Well, you know, that's really weird, because they can go get their license plates for their cars up there on Red Lake, the Red Lake plate for five bucks.
Yep.
Or they can go to Beltrani County and get them too, they can choose what they want.
I know they have.
Yeah, they.
They get a license and it's good forever, for as long as.
But. You know, if you want their Red Lake cars, I mean, I don't understand why they won't be up there.
They're gonna have a, it sounds to me like they're having Minnesota plate station up there.
I couldn't tell you, okay.
How could they do that, though?
I couldn't tell.
Yeah, that's really weird.
So, okay, this is where I'm at. My rep from Park Rapids, so she's meeting with her people on Wednesday of this week, so I don't know, maybe I'll hear some of them. I do know it's getting, it got resubmitted to the state to try to cross the line.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I got my link on Friday. So I'm reviewing it, and I've sent revisions to them already.
Okay, why?
When the revisions are right.
Are they all gonna be done pretty soon?
Well, if the cities gets done, that knocks off.
Yeah.
Mine's done, did you see it?
Yes, it's.
I haven't seen.
Ours is in the process.
Just as long as it's, everything's moving forward.
Yeah, there was, there was a big miscommunication when I went on vacation. That if I wanted to send me the link and the link is only good for fourteen days, I said, don't send me the link, because I'm not gonna be back for X amount of days and it'll expire by then. Send it to me when I get back, and that didn't get communicated to Amanda. And she found that out last week, but like, send me the link, I'm ready to look at it now.
The Sean has been in contact with Amanda and ours, so.
She's, she's, she's working on it.
We're getting ours worked on, so we should be live.
Should be good. Annuation?
I, I sent you guys an email after the last work session, do you want me to proceed with the city attorney and start reviewing everything and moving forward?
Good idea. Those of us that didn't see the email, what, what's?
Thanks. Um. At the work session in March, there was a request to find out, um, if we can spot annex, just annex in. City-owned property into the city.
Of course, country park.
And if it would be a repercussion, I think, a planning commission member asked if it would be a repercussion on the grant that we would receive. From the county for country park, that was unknown. Um, there's nothing in the joint power saying that it would be.
Right.
My communication journey treat was, she's surprised there, a lot of those properties aren't annexed into the city at this point, so. It can, it can help a lot of things, but, yeah.
There's.
There's a process involved, all of it.
I think it's, it's definitely time.
So cemetery, ponds.
Country park.
Country park.
Irrigation field.
And the golf course.
Everything we own outside of the.
Everything we own outside of the limits.
Would be considered setting limits.
Were you gonna consider that, or do I do too, or is that? Sorry.
Here's the thing, I know it's a time-consuming. Effort to do this, and I probably should have been done a while ago. And. Nobody on this board knows first thing about annexing a piece of property. So is that where we are? We're talking to the attorney to figure that out, or you already done that, the email's outlining what needs to be done now?
No. I don't remember what you just said. All that, all the board wanted to know was, could, could it happen?
Mm-hmm.
Did what if hurt entry park?
Okay, and.
My answer was, no, won't hurt, right, entry park and yes, if.
Okay, so now you're gonna find out the steps necessary.
I kind of have a good understanding, but we definitely need our city attorney involved, and I don't want to start that process. Which costs money without the full backing of the board. Just know that it's gonna cost some money, okay? I won't be able to give you an estimate like Jay.
Are you talking about what's the attorney?
Yeah.
Because it's not gonna be a one and done kind of thing, it's gotta go to the township, or their attorney, it's not gonna be. Easy process.
So as long as everything we're doing is.
Moving forward.
That's what we gotta do.
Okay.
Everybody gets a little chance to learn something here. And hopefully.
I've only done. Involved in detachments, not attachments.
So that you don't have to, we don't have to see somebody else. All right. So, moving forward, that cemetery vault. Well, after we talked at the last meeting. Those numbers, we had, I found from talking to Christina, were wrong. Were incorrect, we actually have.
Oh, fifty grand.
Fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars. So we're gonna come back around now to. What's everybody wanna do with the vote?
And a fallen hand and pound guilt.
Yep, it's, it's going.
So. The vote, and how many? What's the idea?
Right now.
What we would like to do. Moving, you know, in the future, obviously, not much of that one. So I want these to be poured down and something else put in its place.
No.
No.
We're gonna move it. We're gonna move it to the southwest corner of the cemetery property. Up to a high and dry spot.
A new one.
And it's gonna be tucked out of the way.
Okay.
Yep, and in place of the current one, I would like to see a memorial of some kind put up. And I actually had a person reach out to me and say that they thought that, uh. Some of the legion members would be happy to donate to that if we got to that point, so that everyone's clear on that. So.
But how to go from, let's go all the way back to the first. Wait, what was first dollar amount had this opportunity to erupt into something?
Basically, long story short, there was a different person sitting where Christina sits right now. And we didn't have the exact fund account. Right, yeah.
Now that we have the exact numbers.
No.
That money is there to use towards.
So, what happens when a, a site is sold? Twenty-five percent of that grave price goes into perpetual care. Set by order, seventy-five goes into cemetery fund, which is two oh one. Two oh two is the perpetual care fund and that's for long-term improvements to the cemetery. Whether it be adding on, buying more property, maintenance, like big maintenance to roads. We have to have the self-section added for the sale of more graves. Or this vault conversation. What was not discussed correctly at the meeting, as I understand, is that. Whomever was here was only looking at your checking side. Of your funds for perpetual care, not your savings side, which is your reserve accounts. And that's where that is then.
Gotcha.
Who's in charge of the cemetery, that's how it works?
We do the administrative portion of it, we sell and do all the records. And, uh, public works is in charge of all the meetings.
Like, not to throw you under the bus, but like.
No, bring it.
But like, my question is, is like, did you know that you have fifty thousand dollars in there? And like, how did you let a building just go without?
I didn't let the building go first off. That's been, that's.
But did you, would you have it in your foresight?
You know, I, I, yes, yes, it's, it's been on my radar since I started. I've got about six pages in my office of what's on my radar and it's just things I've. I mean, I can't do everything.
Oh, no, I didn't get that, I was just kind of curious.
No, it's, yeah, it's been there, it's, it's me slowly picking away at things when I can.
Okay, that's cool, I mean.
And this is one that definitely needs to be addressed, because it's. I mean, it's unusable and it's a huge eyesore in what other eyes is a pretty decent cemetery.
It, it got wrapped like, dumped to you, right? Okay, okay, cool, alright.
It's the right path to take, most cemeteries don't have it anymore. If they do, they have laws and regulations and they're not permanent, so, but that's really high end, if you get to that level. And it's just most, you know, homes are doing the storage for interments until, uh, so.
Well, and.
Very seldom have anybody sort.
Our, our local funeral home has been taking bodies to the midget. Because ours is so rough.
Yeah.
And do they lease the building in all parts?
We have a vault, we actually have a vault fee also, that if somebody is. Going to be interned at our cemetery, it's one cost. But if they're being interned in another cemetery outside of the city, then it's a little bit higher cost than.
What are you talking about? About the service it provides to the entire area?
Always.
I mean, a body out here. Close, you know, going all the way up to Margie.
Yeah, right, I was just wondering if there was.
You know.
We, there's a fee, yes, there is, or, you know.
It's, it's very.
I mean, going forward or, you know, I mean, it's very minimal. And it's, it's not me that.
No, no, it's, again, like Mac said, this is one of those. Community services.
Perfect. So our first step.
First step, take it down. Yep, get rid of it. Question is, I mean. We can take it down ourselves, I mean, wow, it's been there for ever, obviously.
There's a plaque on the front that's got like a poem or something.
That, that.
Really wants that.
I don't, I don't know if he did it or family member did it, but I think he said it to me in passing.
I fully intend to either A incorporate it into the new memorial, or B put it onto the new building. It, it will not leave that out there.
I like that.
Yeah, good, it's pretty big.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all no problem, we're by four pieces granite, that's actually what it is.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Building, I just, or if.
I went over it.
Or moving it is the best case, but to me, it makes sense to put it off to the side instead of dead center.
Well, and another thing that Mike and I worked on in the last year or two was putting. The cemetery on the website. And what I've been able to incorporate in system website is each year I provide to the one designer. A list of all of the people that are buried there or the remains are there. Visiting other, other cemeteries, there's a lot of places that have just like a, a small. Onset, recited place with a map, really nice map of the cemetery where the plots are and. Go to this portion and go to this link and pull it up and find your family member and knowing where the grave is and go around to find them. And that was fully my intention was to make that more user-friendly, because we have the permanent records here, it's in all, but we're not accessible on the weekends. To make it accessible to those that come through the visit.
And we're also, I mean, with what you're saying. When and if I ever get some time, we're gonna try to GIS.
Yeah.
Now that we have that new system that we've been using in town for our water and wastewater. We can ever get some time, that cemetery is gonna be brought online with that as well. That'll help us drastically when we're trying to identify plots out there and directing people where they will be on the ones they buy.
There's. There's property around where the vault is, the old, that's the oldest section in the cemetery. Where there is space available that is plotted to sell, but because of the slope and the property. It is not sellable, gray space.
Okay. So, is the whole cemetery right now? Including. The empty parts.
You, are you talking like the newest section by Bob Senior or up on the top of the hill?
Both, actually. Are, are all of those planted out now?
Just the south section is planted, the section, um, next to Bob's. I don't, I think it stops at the tree line.
I thought it was vice versa, but the west was planted and the south is not. West would be towards Clue's house, south would be through the cemetery and into the woods. So if the person.
It's just not marked on.
Wanted to be buried right in the middle of something that wasn't unplanted. What do you do? No.
That's what you're gonna do, your stuff.
We, we need to.
I already have my spot.
To do it, I was curious that we got. To do it properly, we need to move through the cemetery in a sectional fashion. I mean, I know it sounds, it sounds stupid and goofy, but I'm not trying.
Still have the section before you flat move on and.
In all honesty, I would be that guy. When I die, I wanna be over by that tree.
Back just to be able to do that.
I wanna be dead center right in the middle of this thing. Sure.
You know, and nowadays. Most people are getting cremated, so you're not, you're not going on cemetery like you.
The problem is though, is that the plot still, if you're cremated, then you're allowed to have two people in one plot, so you're really. You're still technically filling it up at the same rate because of the size of the plot that you have. You know what I mean?
Oh, I thought you could have, uh.
No, if you, if you, if you want to get cremated, that's all fine and dandy, but you're still buying a normal-sized plot, you're not buying a one foot.
Yeah, but then we can all, on top.
One more.
Nobody knows. Shaking right out there. Little water, little dust, little water, a water.
Whatever works. So, to, to bring it back around. Before. What, what's the date? When is the next council meeting? Okay, so do you want it then, or do you want it at the work session? If I go and I get an estimate on what materials are gonna be. Or do you want, uh, where do you, do you want me just to take the bull by the horns and handle this situation?
Okay, are you gonna take?
What do you want?
So, if we take the. Are you gonna take all of things out of the inside so that they can be put in?
Well, there's no people in there right now.
This here, it's written about in the ground.
All we have in there right now, I believe, are, uh, uh, what we call the standards.
Yeah, standard.
We'll take those out and we'll store them in our super storage over here. And that's where they'll go and we'll put the new building up, I will actually get with, um. Our current funeral director over here, talk to him, see, you know, what he truly thinks, how many bodies did we take to the midget this year? You know, where, where do we really need to be on a storage side? We, you know, we have a pretty good idea out there, what we would like to see. And bring it to another work session, like. Work session, perfect, is what I'm thinking, is what I'm hearing, is, you know, we're gonna get through the best we can right now with this memorial day coming. Yeah, so what, what I would also like to do then, if we're gonna take that out. I, I don't know if you've all been out in cemetery, I would assume at some point, we have essentially two roads in the cemetery. We have what we call the outer road. Then we have the inner road, the inner road goes up and around the original cemetery. And the current vault is dead center of that. When you go up and you look at the old road, it was at one point asphalt. And it's in really, really, really rough shape, terrible. So what I would like to do with some of this money as well, is just get rid of that and bring some gravel in and, and make that nice so that people can get around. Up until I started here, actually, the center road wasn't even being plowed in the winter time. Well, it was just you had the outer loop and that was it. Now we've started keeping that open, I just. Personally, I think it's the right thing, if it were me, my family was in there, I'd like to be able to get in regardless if it's winter or not. Yeah, that one and, and even the outer road could use a little material, but we'll see where we get with. Price on the vault, yeah, your road good, everybody's road can use some material. But that's, that's what it is, I will bring everything to you guys to the next work session then. Okay. There was one more to approve, or, perfect, get approved, thank you.
I did talk to Kevin right before I got here. Um. I don't know, kind of a combination, Christina, this stuff all took place before I was around or any of this, but. So he's got these two mowers, wants to go through them, he hasn't gone through them yet. He said he would go through them and bring them out to the belt course. And have a few people come up there and look at them, and then that's how you guys make your decision. That's what I know, and you guys can, I don't know anything. I feel bad because I don't, I do however, want you to be there to look at them, make sure Nick's there, you guys.
I was just about to say I'd like to have.
Why, what's Nick? He uses, okay, so that's what I mean, like, I mean, not to be. Just need somebody. Would give me some good advice to the. I need, like Kevin, obviously, yes, but, you know, he's selling it and he's on the belt board, you know, so it's kind of like, ugh. And so he can obviously give us really recommendations, but then I kind of need like someone from the outside, and I kind of, Meg, I kind of want you to be with, too, just because like. The ball really does get dropped, and I hope that someone that actually works for the city, knows how to run these machines and knows how to do some of the stuff. Not just, you know.
Didn't he give you a timeline when he?
Not really, he said maybe.
So, I, I.
Green grass-ish. Literally, that's what he said.
Also, middle of June, I mean.
So, I'm, I'm here in this room. You want, you want to make sure that Mike goes out and runs the machine.
I mean, okay, so like worst case scenario.
I'm just. Just making sure. Everybody's on the same page here.
You can chime in, eh?
I have a question.
I'm gonna talk about the financing when it's to that point, you guys keep.
I don't know anything, I really don't.
Public Works, you. I don't even need to know how to run the machine, I can run the machine. It's all, it's a lawnmower, it's a hydraulic lawnmower.
But would you have a preference though, like?
They're both the same machine.
I don't know, they're not.
Yeah, the controls are gonna be the same, every, everything's the same.
Some kind of hydraulic something driven something and one doesn't.
One, one has cruise control. I think I saw it on that.
They, they both have hydraulically driven.
One conversation at a time, please remember, I have to take two minutes. Be a meaning here, you guys gotta stop this.
Back to me. So, my, my question is. These mowers were purchased back in like October, right? And there still is no guidance whatsoever on which way to go with them?
And the reason for that is because Kevin went and bought them both, he brought them, this whole concept to us in October. This was all discussed with this board. He said that he does not want to move forward with it until he has the ample time to go over both mowers. His business over the winter time. Deploys him from being able to do that.
I know, he's got, he's got fish holes and stuff, again, that.
So he's out of stalemate until he has that time.
We're also in mid-April and last year we were already golfing.
I think I'm the reason that this is probably back on again, because I have a little anxiety and I'm, I'm like, okay, like.
You asked for, you asked for.
Yeah, and I'm trying also like to, and I wasn't part of any of you guys' discussions back in October and all that happy stuff. But, um, like, for me, like, for staff wise too, I mean, if I know for sure that we're purchasing this. This is gonna go from thirty hours of rough mowing to about fifteen hours of rough mowing, so. For me to like, know how much staff I need too, it's like, I just kind of wanted to know too, and then, you know, have time for the. People that work out there to kind of make sure that they had everything they need, their ducks are all in the hole. I really don't want the mower to show up and everyone making a division when we're already mowing, that's, that's not fun, I feel like.
I'm just questioning your timing, because if you're gonna go through another work session with this.
Well, I guess why it's on here.
No, not, not yours, just the timing of this in general. If it goes to another work session in May, I mean, that's where we're at, the next work session is May, then the council votes on it early June?
Exactly, but there's nothing I can do because Kevin didn't go through it yet. He's not gonna bring it to the belt course.
No, I, I get it, Missy, I get it.
And those are only two options. Yes, yes, these are the best options.
It's either, it's either this price or it's this price.
Or it's, uh.
Have we?
Five hundred hours or nine hundred and fifty hours. A two thousand and two or two thousand and seven, like.
Do you have this price or this price, we already.
Have we heard any ballpark yet? No. No ballpark, oh, there is a ballpark.
Yep, seventeen or nineteen.
When that, was that from a golf court meeting?
No, this was in a workshop.
No, it was. No, it was, it's like, everybody figured it was like one thousand dollars.
We don't pay sales.
And I don't think that.
I don't think it's gonna change either.
That number's not gonna change according to anything that Kevin does.
He's gonna pick out the best one for us and he, he sell ya, he said, I trust Kevin.
So if this is, this could still be done and voted at the next council meeting? That's really what I was wondering, that was my question.
Oh, no, I can't, I already decided just.
No, you just gotta, you, you hold it, Kevin.
I did talk to him today, what do you want me to say about? All right.
If that's what you're, yeah.
Give him the date, that's gotta happen by. You guys have to decide on it. May seventh meeting, if you agree to purchase one of these means choice, but then I will set up, I know it's important out of the.
I would say that Misty, if you could talk to him and tell him that we need to see them in the next two weeks before the meeting. I'll go up to his, I'll go up to his shop, I have no problems.
So that we have, he was going home, going home.
Right, okay, so, what I'm getting at is, he wants to bring them to the golf course and have them, hey, go. Why are we choosing if he's supposed to have made the choice? Right, it should already kinda be done, right? We should just be doing the financing. I follow what you're saying. You're saying he's choosing, but then why is he bringing two for us to look at?
It's very, yeah, I totally agree and that's why for me this whole thing is just a little bit confusing.
Cuz then that's not, that's not approving the purchase, that's, we have to make up our minds on which one first. I think, I think Kevin's also trying to avoid a conflict of interest in this situation.
But I think you could say at the next county, um.
You just approve it.
You're approving purchasing either either with the max of twenty thousand or whatever because it was between.
Yeah.
I don't know. As long as the board is agreeing that they're gonna buy it, then that's in your state and then we just tell Kevin, give me the one that's.
Bring the best one.
For the O seven, done. If for some reason we get that O seven and he goes through it and he says, oh no, you want the O two, you flippy flippy and we take two thousand dollars back from him. But if you're on a timing standpoint of approving purchases, this is the steps you have to take.
The ones where we're at.
And he knows that too, whether he brings them both up. Up to my thought anyway.
I'm here now, I'm understanding.
So we should, uh, you don't have much of a choice, but.
Well, I thought that was the case, we just didn't know which one, and so if we just go ahead and.
Then put it on there, we'll move on. We can flippy flippy.
Yeah.
Was the vintage. All right, you raise this. Where have you been taking all me?
Um, this is actually more for just FYI, so since the MOU was signed for the performance stage, we did receive, um, a donation in the amount of, it was about thirty five thousand dollars from the Moon Pfaffco, um, family. Also being held in capital improvement project fund and a thousand dollars from the Woodcarvers, which was a grant that they received from. So now that's in the city's hands for the project. Uh, letter B is a letter, um, from Bill Trammy coming, from Bill Trammy Electric Roundup, for a grant for twelve hundred dollars. Um, that was applied for, for the ground equipment. Um, we're gonna have it on the second, so discuss the things that are happening at the wayside. Oh, right. That was the one that I applied for, I can be tactical of the.
Be a second.
On inclusive playground. And the golf course received a four thousand dollar, uh, donation from Grand Rapids Elementary for youth.
Do we need to approve that at the next meeting then? Or is that a?
I don't think this needs resolution of the board.
Just.
I, I am a little, I, I, I will probably double check, I'm a little concerned about the dollar amount, especially when it comes to like Moon's donation. Um, but I think because we've already approved, uh, memorandum of understanding that the city would be beneficiary for that project. That should cover it, it's just, if it was something like when we receive, money from the relief, we specifically wanted it to go to special equipment.
For the golf carts.
In that fund or the golf carts, you know, that's, that's like that. So at least we have some of that language already approved for the performance stage. Um, there was nothing on here for specifics as to where that needs to go for.
It says, it says that.
Youth program. It does. Oh, there is, good.
Too small, we can't see it.
It is in the month. Yeah, so, um, that, when that funding comes in, we'll get earmarked in the donations line as well. Government's expensive for youth program, including you. Yes, including, yeah. That leaves it for me to decide. Um, did you get the, did we improve the fire departments? Can I do that, you can do that on the fire? I said you got it, but I didn't see it before, alright. So you haven't gotten checked? Okay, I thought you said Adam came in confused. Oh.
Flippy flippy.
Flippy flippy. Okay. My apologies. That's okay, I just didn't see it and I didn't know, maybe. There's a lot of these little tiny things like going to. Okay, that's okay, I just wanna make sure.
Alright.
Um, the last thing I have, uh, on business maxes.
Yeah.
Remember we were talking HRA quite a few months ago?
Yes.
I brought this parcel to your attention, uh, for Streets Southeast. Well, I, I had another family member of the Dalton's reach out to me, Gloria, two winners in Florida. Yeah, so she is very interested in purchasing this piece of property. Um, she'll be back next week. Um, asked me for a number of questions about property, does it have services? What are the taxes on it? How much would we sell it for? The list goes on and on, I gave her answers I could about the services that there are none. Could it be built on? Yes, it can. Um, I have an email out to the county in terms of the taxes, because right now it's only valued at like thirty one hundred dollars, because what I wrote down.
I believe they would, let's see, they, the brother.
That would be Henry?
Yes.
Okay.
They were, I know what he was thinking of. He just didn't wanna do the legwork on it.
Well, I kinda figured that would happen when I spoke with Gloria. Um, I told Gloria the same thing, I told Henry was, come to the city with purchase, an offer to purchase. Well, and what I got back from Gloria was, well, you're the ones that are gonna sell it, so you should be the one that's telling me how much I'm gonna sell, you're gonna sell it for. And I'm like, well, real estate works both ways. You wanna buy it, shoot me an offer, so.
So basically what we're looking at here is a piece of property with no city services.
Correct. Adjacent to her mom's place, right?
Right next to.
Yeah.
So they, they would basically be combining, um, more than likely.
I would think so, yeah.
I don't see them putting up, there was at one time a home on that spot. It was burned down by the fire department as a.
Training.
As a training, back when they could still do that. And, uh, I forget what year that was, but anyway, I don't see them putting anything else up on it.
Okay.
In the future, that I honestly don't.
Well, if I hear back from the county on the tax answer for her and it's a suitable piece of property for the purchase and the cost is right, I would ask if I can make the next step for.
For the HRA?
Yeah.
I would say you put the money into, I would say sell the piece of property and put the money into the account.
Okay. Is this the one you, I know about before?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the same one.
Your house?
Yep.
Yeah. I, I don't see it. Thirty one hundred dollars is the estimated market value?
I, I don't see it getting much over five.
I, yeah, so I.
That, that's.
Thirty one hundred dollars, it's gotta be fair market value for the government to actually sell it too, so.
Yep.
I'll have to get the assessor involved for that.
Good, make sure you tax the grand.
Okay.
If you're gonna move taxes over here.
Oh, John.
I know.
Thank you.
Everyone's hungry.
Counselor Johnson. Something I'll address you from now on. Uh, I, I don't have a problem with, I think so, is anybody else really? Since this is an HRA question, not really a city council question, it's too different. And we're all on that board, so.
I'll continue working with her and getting the answers that she requests. And if it sounds like she, she wants to move forward with, then I'll, I'll be the attorney throughout papers.
Wow. Anybody have anything else this evening?
Um, our credit card balances? I guess I was gonna bring that one up, with my, um, I'm gonna remember what we talked about, the balances. I don't know my numbers, but I have fifteen hundred dollars online, but like for me to go down and buy like two thousand dollars in a kayak, I already can't use it. Is there a way that we can adjust that again, or is that law? Do you recall when we signed it and I said if you, if you were to go up, the city has a total threshold, I can adjust it? So you just do it when it needs to be? Okay. So if I adjusted, how long does that take? For one time purchase, that would like put that through instead?
Which is yours?
Fifteen hundred. What's yours? Fifteen hundred? I don't know.
I thought they were.
Promise. Well, I was hoping she would have.
weren't they all going up more though?
They're going up.
No, it's mine went from fifteen hundred to three thousand. Right, but I thought that they were all still going to go up from there, from what you told me. And mine?
Yeah, the last time I was talking to you, I was. So, so, I don't, I, I think like the spring of the year would be like the time that I would, I'm gonna, if I wanted to do what I wanna do, like so I purchased my clothing, that was two thousand. I took Mike's car and went down and did some stuff, which that won't happen very often, but you know, that was a thousand. Um, I ordered a gate today, that was three hundred dollars, it was like, but fifteen hundred dollars isn't very much. And I just don't know like how often, like, so you'll have to just track like what he's got done or something like that, I mean, you should. Okay. So you've got your first part. About fifteen hundred dollars. Okay. I thought that was to me that.
No, I thought, my understanding was the last time we had a work session, you guys decided that everybody was getting cards, every department was getting a card. That was at the March work session. And that the limits were gonna be five thousand dollars for every department. And I believe my limit was fifteen thousand. That's what was said, right?
Yes, and then I think Christina addressed it as though she needed to get something back from the bank. We had that conversation, um, but we haven't, I, I don't know if it's a big thing that I've seen from the bank that said what our credit was or what.
But no, the credit limit was approved on Friday, increased to sixteen thousand, the total city.
That's all the more that the credit card company, which is Dearwood Bank, is going to give us the sixteen thousand dollars total for a credit line?
They capped it. The bank capped it, that's all the city of Black to be loved, right? That just seems to be more than. And.
Or as words, cap. I don't mean to flat out doubt you Christina, I just, I can't comprehend how our whole cap for the city could possibly only be sixteen thousand dollars. Makes no sense to me. When the city's. The, the city's got a million plus dollars in the bank. My own personal line of credit is more than sixteen thousand, I just don't get it.
Um, is there, um, something from the bank that? That will, just give everybody their information. What are you asking for? Um, documentation from the bank or, you know, like a, a letter that you get when you get a credit card that says how much to get. Increase. I'm asking for an increase. So are you asking for the letter that said you approved for sixteen thousand dollars? Uh, is that the only documentation that you have? Then I guess that's all I can get. I'm okay. Okay.
Is there one denying us for forty? Why? And they, I mean, it's an honest question, I mean, the council approved, you know, how many cards at five grand, mine at fifteen, the, the grand total was forty, so I would assume you spoke with the bank and asked for forty thousand total.
We got a pick for sixteen, what else can I tell you?
Did you ask for forty thousand total?
Yes.
And they came back and said, no on forty.
Financial statements from two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty to the bank. And they approved us for sixteen.
I'm, I'm literally just asking.
I know, but I'm feeling like no one believes anything I'm telling them.
I, I don't know.
Do you think I pocketed the other fourteen grand?
No, I don't think anybody thinks that, that's definitely.
Well, I, 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 I don't know.
Just wanted more information. We don't know how it works. Well, I, I think clearly everybody knows how it works when you ask for a credit application and increase in limit, because Laurie stated the same thing, it's pretty easy, right?
Right.
Okay, and usually there's documentation of saying, okay, well, you asked for twenty or forty and we denied you that, but we needed to, and I think that's the only thing that the board is looking for, or at least some of them are down. Is that, that was our plot.
Um, golf course wise, assuming that my um, well, your license. So that's, I move forward.
I heard you got your Florida.
Hunters are finishing tomorrow.
Motion to adjourn.